All right, good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask the clerk of the board to do a roll call to see who we have on the telephone today.
Supervisor Angus?
Hello?
Supervisor Johnson?
President.
Supervisor Gould?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. So the first item on the agenda today will be a discussion on possible action to update from the county public health director to the board of supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, updates, and taking any necessary actions based upon these updates. Good afternoon Denise.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We'll start with the numbers. We have had 3,614 cases in the county to date. We have 2,621 recovered. Average age of case is 47.9. Average age of death is 76.3. As an investigator update, of the 3,614 cases, we have 2,612 complete, remaining 1,002 are being worked on currently, and all new cases are assigned to investigators, including on the weekends. So we do have those investigators working on the weekends, and those cases are being assigned that come in during the weekend so that they can follow through. Any questions there?
Any questions? Okay, continue.
Okay, all right. Sadly, as you noted yesterday, we reached that 200 deaths number, and hopefully we will see fewer of those in the future as our case count continues to go down. I wanted to apologize last night for the report being delayed as it was. I did reach out to the data team, and we believe we've addressed the concerns and have a plan to avoid this in the future. So you should be receiving those reports in a timely manner at that 7 o'clock timeframe or before. So just wanted to follow up on that from last night.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, testing update. We have some numbers to share from registration for the Health and Human Services surge testing events in all three communities. As of this morning, at about 10:30, for Bullhead City, we have 85 people total registered. For Kingman, we have 52 total registered, and for Lake Havasu City, we have 35 total registered for those testing events next weekend. We want to encourage people to sign up for that testing if they feel that's an appropriate decision for them. We will continue to keep you updated on those numbers at each meeting so you have those available. We also have the registration link, as you know, the communications director has provided that in a press release, and we have posted that to our Facebook page, and we can continue to work on getting more information out about those particular events. But I also believe cities may also be presenting that as well.
Okay.
I don't have a prison testing update at this point in time. I did request one, and I believe we are waiting for that from the prison itself. So when I have more information, I will make sure that I forward that on to you as quickly as possible.
Okay.
So many of you may have heard about vaccines and vaccine planning. I want you to be aware that the state is actually working on a plan, and all state health departments need to have a plan in place by October 1st for the rollout of vaccine when it is available. It has been stated that limited vaccine doses may be available by early November, with additional supplies becoming available in 2021. As we learn more information, of course, we'll share that with the board, but that is what we have at this point. Any questions about vaccines?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Gould?
Denise, you said that the state health department is required to have a plan?
That is correct.
Who is requiring them to have a plan?
You know, I don't have that right in front of me Supervisor Gould, but I can find that out for you and send that. I do have some documents with that.
Because the federal government has no constitutional authority to tell the state what to do?
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, just one second. I also want you to be aware of some antibody testing that is going on right now through the University of Arizona. That antibody testing will be conducted in Kingman and in Lake Havasu City through North Country Healthcare, and we can post information about this antibody testing on our webpage. It's a research study, and it's optional, of course, and it's free to those individuals, and they will receive their results. But this may be of interest to some individuals, and so we want to make sure the information and registration is easily accessible. So I'll make sure that we provide that information out, at least on our Facebook page, and get with the communications director for more information to get out to the public. Okay. All right. Based off the 9 o'clock AM update to the ADHS webpage, the county is now in the moderate category, and businesses can submit an attestation online and immediately receive the approval to open and operate under the moderate category requirements. With an attestation, indoor gyms can operate at 25% occupancy while implementing the ADHS mitigation requirements that are posted on their webpage. Indoor theaters, water parks, and tubing can operate at 50% occupancy and implement those same mitigation requirements. Actually, maybe not the same exact mitigation requirements because of the nature of their business, but the mitigation requirements that are on the ADHS webpage for that particular line of business. Bars, nightclubs, and nightclubs providing dine-in services can operate at 50% occupancy if converted to restaurant service, and again, following the ADHS mitigation requirements. Bars and nightclubs that are not operating as a restaurant are still required to be closed until the county meets the minimal category. That is part of the requirements for those particular line of businesses.
Denise, do we have a definition of what meets the restaurant part of a bar or a nightclub? I mean, there are some that may just serve chips and hot dogs and...
Certainly.
And frozen hamburgers and stuff, so where is that line drawn?
Certainly. If you wouldn't mind, I'll have Ron Balsama, our EH manager, respond to that question.
Yeah, thank you. Hello, Ron.
Oh, good afternoon. Simply, it depends on the type of permit that they have. And so if their permit is strictly a bar permit versus one where they have a bar permit and then they have some sort of a permit that allows them to serve food.
You said some type of a permit. Can you give examples?
Yeah, type 1, type 2, type 3. There's different types of permits, and even within each type, there's subdivisions. But if it's just strictly a bar, you know, and they don't have any sort of a food permit with us, and if they're still of the, what is it, type 6 and 7.
Okay, so if they are just a bar, they can, I assume, come to the health department and apply for a food permit?
They can.
Then meet the requirements for that?
Correct. They would have to submit a plan review, you know, because at that point, they're going to be, if they're going to have a kitchen or something like that, they have to follow the food code for that.
Okay, so they can't just have a microwave oven or a hot dog rotisserie or something and call it a restaurant?
They still kind of have to go through the permitting process and a plan review.
Okay.
Yeah, even a hot dog, you know, cart requires a plan review, you know, to make sure that whatever they're doing, they're doing it safely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ron? All right.
Okay, I have run through all of my updates very, very quickly, and want to make myself available for questions. The one thing I didn't cover was the hospital status report. As I believe you can see, the report doesn't have any red flags necessarily to be, you know, for us to specifically address, so I want to make sure if there are questions about that hospital status report.
Any questions? No. Okay.
Chair and Bishop, if I may?
Ryan Esplund, go ahead.
Yeah, just on the update with the gyms and things, it is, it's very promising that we've gone into that moderate category. That's a good positive thing, and certainly we want to make sure that we're following those things. Let me just pull this up. On August 24th, the board may recall, at that time, a motion was made to approve opening gyms in county buildings with a limit of two people at a time in the gym, and they were responsible to sanitize the equipment when they leave. From a legal standpoint, we had concerns about that motion that was passed. We expressed those concerns at that time. Since that time, we've continued to look at it and research it, and we still continue to have concerns about what was passed by the board at that time with this motion. Specifically, one, we are concerned that as we go forward and try to have businesses comply with what the governor and what the Department of Health Services has required of us, it appears as if we are different than then, that we are following by a different set of rules or different set of procedures. That perception is something that we are very concerned about. We also, for example, we've received a complaint that, you know, we're following by a different set of rules, so to speak. I've heard people concerned that, you know, oh, the county can do this, but we can't do this. And so our recommendation is that the board reconsider that motion, and with the reconsideration, one, to reconsider it, but then, two, take the next step to close the gyms in the county buildings, but that then we reopen them by going through the attestation process that the Department of Health Services has recommended or has required. So basically, we would ask this board to reconsider the August 24th motion, and then we would ask this board to make another motion to go through those steps so that we, so that the gyms in the county buildings are following what everybody else is following, that we are consistent, that we are following the rule of law, we're following exactly what the Department of Health Services requires, and that can be done today. The attestation process can be completed today so that our employees can utilize the gyms, but in a safe way, a healthy way, and that is consistent with what the Department of Human Services requires of every gym, every indoor fitness place throughout all of Arizona.
Mr. Esplund, if we followed your recommendation, then the gyms would close by our motion if it's approved, and then almost immediately reopen once we file the proper paperwork like any other business will have to do today?
Yes, we want to be on the same track as all the other businesses and things so that we're consistent, so that we can say, hey, we're doing the same thing, we're following the same through. And keep in mind that what that does is we would be asking the board, you know, go through the attestation process and then follow what the Department of Health Services requires of gyms, so that we're following the same rules, same guidelines. And what that means is we would, you know, we're in the yellow, great, we're in the moderate, that's what we want, and if we get down into green, then we can increase the capacity even more. But also, the opposite is true as well. If it goes into the red, that we would have to close as well, because that's one of the requirements. We just want to be consistent, and we want to follow what exactly the Department of Health Services requires. And it's important that we do that because otherwise, we're out of step with what we're asking all the other businesses throughout the county and throughout the state to be doing. And I get, you know, whether it applies or not, that's really not the issue. The issue is, we want to make sure that we are consistent with what everybody else is doing, that we are not above the law or below the law or anything like that. We are just making sure that we're in line with that, and we're following what those guidelines are. From a legal standpoint, that will help ensure that we're on more firm legal ground, and so we're asking that the board consider reconsidering and then taking the next step of going through that process.
Madam Chairman, please. I seconded the motion from the August 24th meeting and recommended the limiting of two people at a time, and I thought that was it within the realm of reason. But information has come forth that we have a gym business in an area other than my district, and they're operating at full capacity with little regard to trying to follow any type of protocol to safeguard their customers. So in light of that, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the decision to approve the opening of the gyms in the Mojave County buildings.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion or a second?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
The only thing that fits is just a little, we are not a business. We are not a business. So it is a room with some equipment in it. That's the only thing I want to say. I don't understand the big deal, but, you know...
Supervisor Angus, I don't believe we can understand you.
Well, I think I understood what she was saying. I was able to kind of get it. I think what she was saying, and correct me if I'm wrong Supervisor Angus, was, we are not a business, so that it's not necessary to go through these steps. Is that correct Supervisor Angus?
Yes, correct.
And I respect that, I do, and I get that. And if you look at the executive order, it just says gyms. It doesn't specify for-profit, nonprofit, county buildings, government buildings, it just says gyms. And so it's an uncertain question, but to me, the important part is that we want to be, the message that we're sending and the consistency that we wish to give to the residents in Mojave County is, this is what the Department of Health Services requires of gyms, and we want to make sure that we are following that, and that they've got these guidelines and that we will be following them, and if we expect gyms to do that, that we will do the same. You know, if there's an enforcement action that's necessary, if it comes to that, it would be in a difficult situation where we're not following what the governor and what the Department of Health Human Services requires, but yet we're asking them to do that. And so it just, it puts us in a very difficult situation. Secondly, too, from a legal standpoint, if something were to happen, if we were to get sued, we always want to be consistent with what the laws are and what those departments have said. The department has specific guidelines and regulations, and if we're following those, we're always going to be on firm ground when it comes to any kind of lawsuit. So that's why, and again, this is also somewhat of a compromise, so to speak. We will be able to open up the gyms once we get that attestation submitted. The director is familiar with the process, she understands what needs to be done, she'll be submitting that, so they will be open, but we will be on track and online with what the Department of Health Services is requiring of us. So the gyms will be open in accordance with the moderate category, what is necessary in the moderate category. And in full disclosure, that could raise us, if we go to red, we would go up to red and we would close it. On the other hand, if we go down to green, then we could, we can increase the capacity. We just want to be on that same track.
Madam Chairman, Gould here.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I feel that the governor's rules are arbitrary and capricious. The method of testing and the basing testing on the number of positive tests is arbitrary and capricious. Our government response to this whole pandemic is arbitrary and capricious and has destroyed the economy, and did exactly what I feared would happen, was that the cure was worse than the disease. I voted to open up the county gyms because I could. I would vote to open up the private gyms if I could. I would open the bars if I could, but I can't. And that's why I voted to open up the gyms, because I could, as a pushback to the governor's arbitrary and capricious ruling. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, did we get a second? Okay, I will second the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
No.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call on that. Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Gould? Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes 3 to 2.
And Chairman Bishop, if I may?
Mr. Esplund, go ahead.
So now that the motion has been reconsidered, what we'll be asking is to temporarily, temporarily close the gyms in the county buildings until staff have completed the attestation process for reopening as required by the Arizona Department of Health Services, and once we've completed that process, to follow the requirements for indoor gyms and fitness centers. We recommend that the board take that action.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Watson?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion to temporarily close the gyms located in Mojave County buildings until staff has completed the attestation process for reopening as required by the Arizona Department of Health Services. Once Mojave County has completed that attestation process, Mojave County shall follow the Arizona Health Department's requirements for indoor gyms and fitness centers for gyms located in county buildings.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion or a motion?
I'll second for discussion.
I'm sorry, any other discussion or a second? Did someone make a second?
Supervisor Johnson, I'll second for discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. Supervisor Johnson has seconded. There's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. Madam Clerk, would you do the honors, please? Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Johnson? Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes 3 to 2. Okay, thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? So I wanted to bring up the fact that the board at last meeting and expressed concern with the possibility of the outcome of the prison test results, and they designated me as my spokesperson, along with the assistance from Denise Burley, our director and our county manager. We've spoken to various people. I believe Denise spoke with Mrs. Riggler and Dr. Christ at ADHS over the telephone, and the prison testing that could negatively impact our case numbers and percent positively. And she's requested that the data from this testing be removed or not reflected in our county numbers, and I concur with that. So Ms. Riggler stated that there were several counties with prisons within their boundaries that are requesting the same change. So ADHS is working on a solution, they're working with their legal team to make sure that they can, they can do something to remedy this problem, if it does become a problem. So the testing could positively impact Mojave County benchmarks with the count and percent of positivity are low, and conversely, if those numbers are high, it could do the negative. So this will be a 12-day reporting time lag, and the impact's not going to be known officially until September 24th, I believe, or even later, maybe October 1st, depending on when the prison gets their test results. We're still having conversations on the state level, and if anything changes, I'll report back. Does anybody else have any questions or further comments? Okay, anything else Denise?
I do not have anything else.
All right, we'll go on then to item number 2. It's to be a discussion on possible action to review the governor's executive orders regarding inspections, investigations, enforcement activities as they relate to Mojave County business, community, and provide direction to staff on dealing with future complaints. Supervisor Watson, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I bring this item to you to help clarify and to make Denise's job a little bit clearer. Up to this point, we've identified several steps of which we were all in accordance with. What has occurred here the last week is, are some businesses within the county that are obviously just disregarding any type of protocol or protection of their customers, and it really has alarmed me. I just found out this morning that I've just lost two close friends for many years that died from coronavirus. Actually, they died of pneumonia, but it was influenced by the virus. And so with that, it brings to light the responsibility of each and every business owner to protect their customers, and that's what we're trying to do, is to enlighten those businesses that they have not only an ethical standard to reach, they've got a medical standard and a health standard to reach. And in order to do that, the Mojave County Health Department Director needs to have clear vision and understanding of her ability to enforce that. So with that, I'll make a motion to permit the Mojave County Department of Health to inspect, investigate, and enforce the Arizona Governor's executive orders as proposed by the Mojave County Health Director, including the pursuance of legal actions in accordance with the executive orders and Title 36 of the Arizona Revised Statutes. This motion shall clarify and supersede any previous board discussions regarding enforcement of the executive orders, including the discussions on August 10th and August 13th of 2020.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Watson, and I just wanted to point out that this, these letters could have went out yesterday, but I took it upon myself as chairman to hold off on this because I wanted the board members to actually see the first letters that we send out, since this will be our initial beginning of, hopefully will be the last letters that we have to send out. You know, maybe this will set the tone, and we won't have to do any more, but I wanted the board to see how the letter is written and be able to comment on it, and then this letter, if this motion passes, will go out this afternoon.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm kind of outside, so if you can't understand better, can you hear me?
The last few words you spoke, I could hear clearly, but before that, it was pretty bad.
Yeah, I think this will be better. Okay, so as I understand that the letter being talked about right now was in relation to a business who stayed open, but now they are able to be open. They were given permission by the state, and they have the paperwork to prove it, so why would that letter go out? And my other comment is, is this really something we want to put upon the Health Department to be the enforcer on top of everything else they have to do? I wonder, I'd like to know how Denise feels about that.
Okay, Denise has come into the podium, but I believe this is required by the Health Department per Arizona Revised Statute, but she's at the podium now, and I'll let her speak for her department.
Correct, thank you, Madam Chair.
Correct, thank you, Madam Chair. Supervisor Angus, we have a statutory responsibility in the executive order and a path for enforcement there. And in some of the language in there, it does say "shall," that we shall enforce. So in those instances where we see a violation and we understand that language, it does compel us to move forward with some type of enforcement action in order to ensure that we're following statute and law. And in one case, Supervisor Angus, just to clarify, so in your example of whether or not we were in a substantial or moderate, and how that impacted the businesses, for the gyms, that would be true, that they could reopen under a different occupancy. However, for one of the restaurants, they fall under a different requirement that has allowed them essentially to stay open during this time, but also they were given requirements that they had to follow. In our inspections, they were not following those requirements. And so in those cases, that's a little bit different, because that business has been allowed to remain open, but they are not following the requirements that have been put forth. And the complaint that we followed and inspected on was, did indicate they're not complying with those requirements.
And Chairman Bishop, if I could also chime in too?
Yes, Mr. Eskman, go ahead.
And if I could have also, after I finish, if I could have Director Burley explain the process. What we're talking about is consistent, what we're talking about is education first. We're going to educate first, we're going to notify first. So when the complaint comes in, a verbal warning and education and teaching, say, here's what you need to do. If it comes again, if they still continue to violate the orders, okay, then we'll take the next step. It'll be whatever that next step is, and I'll defer to Director Burley as to what that is. And then we'll get to that final step, at which point, at some point, Director Burley's going to say, okay, you're still disobeying it, you're not following it, we've gotten to our third step now, so now we take the next step. And that's where we've been working, the county attorney's office and with the public health department, and now here with the board today, is, okay, we want to take that next step of, okay, we've educated, we've gone through this, we've gone through this, we're in step three, they're still not following it. So now we look in Title 13. Title 13 allows the Health Director to initiate actions. These would be civil in nature, it would not be criminal. So it allows the Health Director under Title 33 to take that next step by filing an action in court. We believe that filing that action in court would allow litigants an opportunity to be heard, it's due process, it's exactly what the law requires of us, and we would do that. But even before we would get to that, we would still give them a last opportunity to comply. We would still, you know, say, hey, you know, the county attorney would get involved and say, hey, you know, we don't want to file this, please don't push our buttons here, we don't want to do this, but if we have to, here it's available. So that's what we're proposing here, is go through all the steps, and only as, you know, we've tried everything, now we have to go through the civil mechanisms. And in Title 36, it lays those out. We have Deputy County Attorney Lenore Knutson's here, and she has researched this, she knows this very well, she's been advising the Health Department on this. So we know who that, through that process is, we just want to make sure we're getting it right. And if you have any specific questions about those, she's here available to answer those. But if we could have Deputy Burley just explain that process, if you would.
Certainly.
Madam Chair?
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Eskman, how long does this three-step process take in days?
It depends on the violation, it depends on if they're doing it quickly or not. I mean, we jump on the complaint whenever the Health Department can do that, but we got to go through those steps. I mean, we emphasize, we get the importance of ensuring the health and safety of the public. But on the other hand, we also, you know, that balancing of the business interest of ensuring that the business can get into compliance. Anytime you're enforcing something, you always want to have voluntary compliance rather than come down with the hammer, so to speak. But we need the hammer, just in case, but we got to go through the process of doing it.
All right, so that's not really an answer that anybody can take to the bank. Now, under the executive order dated July 9th, signed by Governor Ducey, it gives complete authority to the Mojave County Department Health Director to treat businesses violating the precautions put in place to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 as a public health nuisance in accordance with ARS 36-601 and ARS 36-183. The statute is pretty clear on what the health inspectors are to do. Nowhere in the statute does it say the health inspector has to get board approval. In fact, if this was any other nuisance complaint, they would have probably already dealt with it. Which brings me to the question of why we are just now asking to take action on a complaint from August 11th. We've had two meetings a month for almost five months now, and health is just now asking the board what we should do for enforcement? If this was not COVID-related, I assure you, the health would have already done their job. Staff needs to do their job. This board needs to decide if we are in a public health emergency or not. The White House, governor, and the cities have all declared a public health crisis. Whether we like the rules or not, these are there to protect the community from an invisible virus. COVID-19 is more transmittable and more deadly than the flu. We only lost seven people during the entire 2009 H1N1 pandemic, and only had a little over 300 cases. What COVID has, three times as many. And no one can deny this is a health crisis. During a public health crisis, state statute clearly defines the rules of who is in charge in enforcement. The governor has made that definition even clearer in his July 9th executive order. No one wants to see businesses shut down. However, there are rules and regulations that must be followed if we truly want to reopen our businesses and get our economy going. During normal times, restaurants have to follow health standards and rules and regulations set forth by the Liquor Board and other authorities. While I understand that some of these regulations during COVID-19 are putting a strain on businesses, they were put in place to protect the health of Arizona residents. We all saw what happened with our numbers when bars, restaurants, and others were allowed to reopen at the end of May, and no regulations or real rules were placed on them. Arizona saw a dramatic spike in our numbers and had the highest positivity rate in the entire country. In order for businesses to reopen under the governor's plan, we have to have our percentage positive at 10% or lower. As we found out today, we finally met that percentage positive benchmark. In order to keep our businesses open, we have to keep it below 10. It is in everyone's best interest to follow the rules so we don't see a spike. When it comes to Pacific Gym and sending them the letter, I believe that is a moot point, is we allowed to reopen legally, they're allowed to reopen legally today. But what isn't moot point is ensuring businesses stay in compliance, that we are rewarding this business for endangering the health and safety of our citizens while we force similar businesses to close and lose revenue. That, in my opinion, is unacceptable. Do we not have any adult leadership in this county? It is very clear from the executive order and state statutes what is required of the Health Department. And I believe the final authority on what should be done rests with the Health Department, not this board. Under ARS 36-183, the Health Department has steps that include criminal prosecution for businesses who do not comply. ARS 36-601 says the director can obtain a court injunction to restrain the business from continuing the activity. From an outsider's point of view, the health club in the Mojave Valley was given special treatment to stay open for nearly a month while everyone else had to close. There were gyms within the city limits being shut down with the help of our county health department. Now, the only difference I see from the cities and us is us refusing to follow along. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay.
If I could just briefly respond to that? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Supervisor Watson.
Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
Thank you Supervisor Johnson, for clarification on all those items. The reason I bring this item forth today is because of the discussions and actions taken on August 10th, August 13th. My motion today clarifies and supersedes those discussions and clarifies Ms. Burley's responsibility and ability to enforce those executive orders. So hopefully, this motion will help clear it up.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you Supervisor Watson. My problem is, you heard Mr. Eskman say he has no idea what one, two, and three steps are. I mean, if we're in a pandemic, and somebody is not going to follow the rules, if we go there, like the one restaurant, and we say, hey, you're not following the rules, and they say, pound sand, we're going to wait and go back two weeks later and say, hey, are you doing it? And they say, nope. And then we wait another three weeks and go back? I mean, if they're going to spread the pandemic, they're going to spread it. I just don't see where that's taking any action. I mean, I understand your motion, but I think the Health Department needs to do their job.
Well, and the motion, I believe, helps clarify and will give her the ability to perform her duties.
Okay, Mr. Eskman?
Yeah, no, I respect what you're saying Supervisor Johnson, and we want, we want businesses to follow the law. That's what we're here, the county attorney's office, we want to make sure that people are following the law. That's what we're all about. So, you know, amen to what you said, that we agree with that part. It's just, it's not as easy to do that. I wish it was that easy, but, you know, the discussions on August 10th and August 13th, it seems to suggest that that's not the direction the board would want the Health Director to do. And I get that the Health Director, under the statutes, could do those things, but the Health Director, like we all, we all, everybody's got a boss in this world, and it's not that easy. It's difficult. And what we're doing is we're trying to say, hey, this is the direction that you need to go. We think that this is the direction you need to do, and we'll do that. We'll try to do it as quickly as we can, but sometimes you just can't do it immediately. There are certain restraints. And I know that you've had conversations with our office about that, that there are certain things you have to go. Sometimes, we cannot do immediate. We had a discussion before meetings today with, in my office, or in our office, where we talked about how if you go one path with the restaurants, you can't do immediate, but yet if you go the path with the gyms, you can do immediate. Those statutes that you're citing, they apply to some, but they don't apply to others. So you have to make sure that the correct ones apply, so that we're going forward.
I've lost the conference.
We want to make sure that we're following the law, and we want everybody to follow the law. That's why we're asking that we are supportive of Supervisor Watson's motion. We want those things to be done so that the Director knows exactly what direction she needs to go. There's people that don't agree with your viewpoint Supervisor Johnson, there's people who don't agree with that, and so we want to say, okay, here is the collective position of the Board of Supervisors, and here you go, here's the way, the path you need to move. And we'll go as quickly as the law will allow her to do that. I mean, sometimes, I wish we could do things immediately, but many times, the law is slow to react to stuff. We try to do it as quickly as we can.
Mr. Eskman, if I could add to that, I think part of the complications has been with this ever since the executive order and the pandemic started, is we have a split board. Some board members are going out on their own and going to our state legislators and our leaders and trying to manipulate or change the view of the majority of the board. And it's just caused some very emotional moments to where I think our Health Director is doing her best, trying to keep all five supervisors somewhat happy, some kind of level of compromise. But at the same time, we have our citizens, our residents, our business owners, they're also split, as much as our board and as much as our state leaders are. Nobody likes this pandemic, and nobody wants it to go forward, and nobody wants to get sick. And I think it's a little bit different than any other pandemic, because there's so much disbelief out there on one side, and then fear on the other side. So I want to thank our Health Director for trying to, trying to figure out how to do something that none of us have ever seen or done before. And I agree with Supervisor Johnson, we're both prior law enforcement, and we are a nation of laws, and if we have laws, we ought to enforce them or we ought to change those laws. I'm a firm believer of that. So I think that's what we're trying to do today with Supervisor Watson's motion, is trying to not change the law, but to clarify it and to go forward, and let's get these letters sent. Because I think these two particular businesses, even though we're in the moderate, I don't know that they're even going to comply because they didn't before, so are they going to file the proper paperwork now that they have an opportunity to do that? I don't know. So if the letters go forward, they have the opportunity to remedy the problem immediately and file the paperwork today.
And if I may, Chairman Bishop, an important part of this is that, you know, that we move forward with legal action if necessary. That's a critical part to this, and I think that's the part that was really missing beforehand. In the discussions on the 10th and the 13th, it was just, here, provide this education, and then that was it. It's really that next part, okay, let's go forward with the legal actions if necessary. I mean, what we're talking about, and I think what Supervisor Johnson is getting at, and correct me if I'm wrong Supervisor Johnson, but, you know, we want to make sure that it's a fair playing field, it's fair for everybody, we're all following the same rules, and that here's what the rules are, and we want to make sure we follow it. You know, many times, and I've totally seen this through the pandemic, is we're talking about a balancing of interests. On the one hand, we have the balance of we want to make sure people are healthy, people are safe, people are, will be free from the virus, but on the other hand, we also have the interest of people of liberty, interest of personal liberties, the interest of businesses to make a living. So you balance those, it's those balancing things. So we start to educate, and if they refuse, then we go into the, go into the legal action side of it. Just the balancing, and that's what we're asking for here.
Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to hear from Lenore what the potential penalties are on these businesses.
Okay, Lenore is coming to the podium.
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Gould, we are talking about a compilation of different statutes under Title 36 and Title 36-602 in conjunction with 36-183.05 permits the Health Director through the county attorney's office to seek an injunction in Superior Court to compel compliance with the executive orders. Along with that, before going to court for an injunction, the Health Department does have the authority to impose a civil penalty after an order to comply has been disregarded, and I mean, an order to comply from the Health Department. That 24-hour order is pursuant to 36-602. If the business fails to comply with that order to comply, then it is possible for the Health Department to impose $1,000 a day, up to $10,000, as a civil penalty. At this point, we are only talking about civil penalties, not criminal ones.
Well, my problem is, we accepted money from the state that was only supposed to be used for education, and now we have a Health Department that is going to use that against health clubs that they have no authority until the executive order to enforce.
And I did wrestle with that same concept, and I took guidance from what is the emergency measure 2020-02. And that measure is put out by the Arizona Department of Health Services, and it does speak to the first priority being educate and provide technical assistance. But towards the end of that document, if a business fails to comply into compliance after education and technical assistance, then ADHS and local health departments may take immediate action against any entity that operates in violation of this emergency measure. So again, the emphasis is still on education and technical assistance. But when a business continues to operate in violation of the executive order and also the emergency measures put out by the Arizona Department of Health Services, it requires a response from the local Health Director.
I just want to remind the board members that this is not law. This did not go through the legislature, and the legislature was foolish to provide dictatorial powers to anybody. And now we're suffering these consequences of these dictatorial powers that were given to the governor. So when we talk about rule of law, bear in mind, these did not go through the process. Thank you.
And if I could just speak to that, and- And if I could just speak to that, and Supervisor Gould, I respectfully disagree with that analysis. The legislature, the people voted the legislature to then pass laws. The legislature then passed this law that allowed the governor to issue these executive orders. The law allows the governor to do that. That can be challenged. The third branch of government is the courts, and they can be challenged, and they have been. In the context of the gyms, they have been, they've been challenged, they have been upheld. The Superior Court down in Maricopa County has upheld the legality of that. It's been challenged a couple different times in that same court, and what the court, from what I understand, has upheld it, but it's not unqualified, and it's not unqualified, and the governor must allow them, at least the gyms, an opportunity, a path to reopen. And that's what the governor has done, and that's what the governor has followed through. So there's a process by which to challenge those laws, and people have challenged them. People can continue to challenge them. That's what you do. You file the court action to challenge them. And as you point out, the legislature passed laws, and the legislature can, in the next session, they can revoke that law, they could change that law. So those things can happen and take place, but as it currently stands, this is the current state of the law, and we're falling within the bounds of that law. And there's laws that I disagree with, I don't like, but we still, okay, we've got to follow through with it, we've got to follow the law, and if we can use efforts and things to change those, then we do that. And we put our efforts into our elected officials, into our state representative and our state senator, and we ask them to change things, and they go, and they try to move forward to change things. That's the process by which we do it. And so this is the current state of the law. Not everybody's a fan of it, but we try to follow the law, and that's the key that we're trying to do here.
Madam Chairman, originally, the governor gave no pathway to gyms to open.
That's correct.
They had to go sue the governor over that to obtain that right.
There was a court action. It was a court action filed in Maricopa County, and again, the Maricopa County upheld the governor's ability to do that with the caveat that you have to provide a pathway back, and now that's why the governor has offered these pathways, these ways to get, so that they can reopen.
The problem with the legislative branch correcting any overstep of the governor is they can't seem to get a two-thirds petition to call themselves back into session.
That's true. That's...
So until they get called into session, the people's voices are quiet and in silence because they can't afford an attorney to go represent their rights for the most part, because their livelihood has been taken away from them. Thank you.
Sure. And I get the challenges with being able to go to court, but people have challenged this. I mean, it's gone to court, and people have filed actions to challenge the governor's executive orders.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add, Lenore?
I would just like to echo some of the words of Attorney Esplin. We will continue to focus on educate and technical assistance as part of the process. I also recognize Supervisor Johnson's concerns about the length of time that it may take. We are still talking about due process, and so businesses would be given an opportunity to correct after education and technical assistance. We are not talking about weeks or months, depending on the outcome of this motion. If this board says yes, seek enforcement consistent with Title 36, then we are, we have a clear direction, we understand what to do. We will work in conjunction with the Public Health Department to make sure that those notices are timely, that they are succinct, that the business owner is informed. The best opportunity that we have to help businesses reopen, particularly those out of compliance, is to give them clear definition and direction on how to reopen safely, so that we never have to go to court. If they comply with that, they're back in business, and we don't go to court. If they don't comply with that, then our role as county government and the direction of the Public Health Department through the Arizona Department of Health, as well as the executive orders of the governor, take hold, they take root, and they compel a response at the county level, which is, may include closure of business if they refuse to come into compliance. This is not a step that we look forward to taking, and it is our absolute hope that we could continue to work with these businesses and never go to court. But at this point, we have a few businesses that are refusing to come into compliance. That hurts other businesses, because the playing field is no longer level. Some businesses operate in compliance and are making all the money, when other businesses are, excuse me, I said that backwards, some businesses are operating in compliance, making little to no money. Other businesses are essentially refusing to comply with the law, and they've garnered all the business. That's unfair as well. So the best thing that we can do is to uniformly apply the executive orders and the statutes to ensure that the citizens of Mojave County are safe, and that businesses are on a level playing field, and one isn't taking the business of the other.
Lenore, is, could it be a defense for these businesses to state that they received guidance and information from someone that they trusted of a legal authority, whether it be an attorney or someone well-versed in areas that would cause them to trust their advice more so than the Health Department?
Well, you've used the term defense, Chairman Bishop, and ultimately, if put before a court, I don't know that that would be a legal defense, but it certainly is an argument that would cloud the clarity with which we should be approaching these issues. At the end of the day, my belief is that a court is going to make a legal decision based on the requirements of statute, based on the requirements of executive order. There may very well be an admonishment to make sure that we are expecting compliance and enforcing compliance, as opposed to encouraging anyone within Mojave County to disregard compliance.
Okay. I just keep hearing comments like, we were told we didn't have to open because we're in the county, or we were told this, and I don't know who is doing the telling, but I know there's a lot of confusion out there, and perhaps that's why we've kind of taken a soft approach on this, because none of us want to see a good business be damaged by a pandemic, of all things. And we want them to follow the governor's ordinance, his executive orders, and comply, and get back to doing business as normal eventually.
And if I may, Chairman Bishop, the most direct path to having that business operate is by working with the Health Department to come into compliance. Anything other than that will delay their ability to earn a living or conduct their business. So the most direct path to helping businesses is working with the Health Department to achieve that balance between safety and business.
Is there a challenge to the liquor license with this one business? Does that come into play, or really, the Health Department really doesn't have anything to do with licensing with the liquor board, but...
All available means would be utilized to bring someone into compliance, up to including notification of the state liquor licensing officials, because they do have an interest in it as well. And there's been directives through the executive orders that the liquor license board would revoke or fail to issue a liquor license for a business that's not in compliance. So that is a big part of the enforcement efforts, but again, all of that takes time. And the fact that we have a liquor licensing board that may be able to pull a license, revoke it, doesn't in any way negate the responsibility of county government through their Health Department to step up enforcement as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone have any further questions of Lenore?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Let Supervisor Gould go first.
Okay. Supervisor Gould, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm just curious, which men with guns are we going to send out to people's businesses to enforce the order?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
Because in the end, that's what it boils down to.
Supervisor Gould, we couldn't understand you. Could you repeat that?
Which men with guns will be sent out to enforce the order?
Is that a true question, or are you just trying to make a point?
Yeah, I'm curious.
I'm sorry? What?
I'm curious, because in the end, that's what it boils down to. If people fail to comply long enough, you send men with guns out to enforce the order. And I'm curious, which men with guns are going to be sent?
I'm not sure if that question is directed at me, but I would certainly defer to the board.
I can, I can try to answer this as best I can. What we would do is this, and we would follow the steps that the Director has. After that, we would then go through a court action, a civil court action, at which time we would seek, we would seek a court order ordering the business to shut down. We would also ask for an order directing the sheriff to impose that. We would then present it to the sheriff and ask the sheriff to enforce it. We would, so the sheriff has firearms, and so it would be the sheriff's office that we would ultimately ask. It would be up to the sheriff whether the sheriff would follow through with that.
Since our sheriff has said that he won't enforce the governor's executive orders, where does that put us?
Well, this wouldn't be coming from the governor, it'd be coming from the Superior Court. It would be coming from Mojave County Superior Court, an order from the Superior Court.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. And again, I can't speak for the sheriff. I'm not, I don't work in the sheriff's office. The sheriff is an elected official, and I respect his position. What we're asking for here is what is within the law that we can apply and that we can do.
Okay, Supervisor Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the problem I'm having with what the attorneys are telling us is I still believe that the Health Director has the authority and doesn't need anything from our board, whether we agree or disagree with her. The authority was given to the Health Director, and they shouldn't be overrun by the board, or I think we even have the authority. But when we're talking about, oh, we have to educate all these people, every business knows exactly what the rules are. They're defying the rules. And what we're doing is punishing the people who are following the rules. Now, I don't know, you know, and it doesn't make any difference if all the board agrees or disagrees with what the rules are, those are the rules that were set down for. And if people are going to flaunt those rules, it could result in the positivity rate going up and punishing more the people who were following the rule. Somebody needs to give me an idea of what we're going to do as far as the first, second, and third warning. You've been giving the businesses in front of us today those warnings, and nothing has happened. I mean, are we going to continue that for weeks on end to give people extra chances to do this? That's kind of what I'm asking.
If I may, Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Johnson, I understand your concern, and if I might reference, I think, the provision in the executive order that Supervisor Johnson is referencing. It is in 2020-47 that deals specifically with restaurants, and we're talking about paragraph eight. It says, "In addition to penalties and enforcement provided by ARS, sections 26-316 and 26-317, failure to comply with this order and any other guidance issued by the Arizona Department of Health Services related to precautions to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 shall constitute a public nuisance dangerous to public health pursuant to ARS 36-601, paragraph A, and action is authorized and shall be taken," which is where I think Supervisor Johnson is rightfully placing the emphasis here. "shall be taken to abate the nuisance by the county health inspectors pursuant to ARS 36-183.06 and other law enforcement or state agencies as mandated by the Director of the Arizona Department of Health Services, including the immediate closure of such facility pursuant to ARS 26-303E2." Again, reading all of these provisions in harmony, because you have to chain them all together to make sense of this, taking a close look at 183.06, that is essentially an inspection statute. And what it does is talk about the responsibility duty, the shall part, shall be inspect consistent with 183.06, which then would mean that if an inspector finds a business out of compliance, the inspector may serve a notice of violation that contains a specific time and place for the alleged violator to appear, and that specifies the statute ordinance or regulation or order violated. Notice must prescribe a time for response. The very statute that Supervisor Johnson is relying on to talk, excuse me, to emphasize the shall component, also has a time element in it that allows due process to the alleged offender that would give them an opportunity to respond. There is a provision in the public nuisance statutes in 36-602 that is a more direct source of authority to address noncompliance with executive orders. That would be the very next step. So our plan, working with the Health Department, is to give a tight turnaround time if there is a notice to appear issued pursuant to the mandate in the executive order, and that is 36-183.06. We also have the enforcement action in 36-602 that would allow us to issue a 24-hour notice, a 24-hour order to comply, and it's that order to comply. If a business continues to disregard that, then we'd be on a path to court. So are there steps? Absolutely. There is no one step to close a business, nor should there be, because that business would be entitled to due process. So we do continue to educate and offer technical assistance, and there's one additional very important reason for that, and that is the county has entered into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Health to provide that education and technical assistance, and actually accepted funds for that purpose. So we do have a continuing obligation to educate and offer technical assistance. It is not the only arm of enforcement, but it would be very difficult for us to go to court and say, we want this injunction, grant it, Your Honor, without having followed the education and technical assistance steps first.
Okay. Very good explanation. Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Is the sheriff there today to answer the question that Supervisor Gould brought up?
The sheriff chief deputy is here, and he's making his way down to the podium.
Thank you.
The chief deputy, Dean McKee, good afternoon.
Chairman Bishop, Supervisor Johnson, what was the question?
Supervisor Gould was asking if the sheriff was going to enforce the request from the Health Director. I believe that was his question.
I believe it was a court order. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. If we received a court order from a Superior Court judge, we would most definitely entertain that.
Does entertain that mean you'll do it, or not?
We would review it, seek legal counsel, and more than likely, yes.
Okay, because...
If it's directing the sheriff's office to do something specific, then we most definitely would.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions of Deputy McKee?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
If I could just close this off, Deputy, or excuse me, Director Burley, if you could just specify those steps that you'll do?
The steps that we've outlined in the past, in past meetings, first step would be an inspection and education and technical assistance at that point. The second step would be a second inspection. That inspection would occur, and we are moving our timeline up also, so trying to tighten that timeframe up, so that we can ensure that those visits are conducted quickly, but also give the business time to comply. So the second visit would be an inspection, and if out of compliance, we would issue a verbal warning, basically, and say, you're still, you remain out of compliance. We expect this to change. And then the third step in this process is to issue a written warning, which would be a third inspection. We would need to go back and observe the fact that they are still noncompliant in that process. And then if that is the case, we would issue a written warning. And then if that is the case, we would issue a written warning, which is something that you've received in your packet. And then the fourth step would be moving into a legal process.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Director Burley, can you tell me how many days that encompasses?
Certainly, and this is something that we, we actually were taking your comments last week to heart about the timeline being too far out. So what our goal is, is to follow a process that we have used with nuisance complaints in the past. So in many respects, we are out investigating a complaint within 24 hours on the initial complaint. We do generally go back within 72 hours to re-inspect a property in those particular nuisance complaints, so we would follow that same guide. And obviously, these are, these are what we currently follow, so it's consistent, but the third step, we would certainly follow up within that same timeframe to inspect for a third time.
So if I'm correct, you're saying we go out one day, and we tell them, oh, these are the rules you're supposed to follow, the same ones you know about, and then three days later, we go back out there and say, oh, these are the rules you're supposed to follow, and then the other three days before we go back out?
That would be the maximum time, would be the three days, and we can certainly be open to a different timeline for that, to move that up, Supervisor Johnson.
Yes, I understand that...
That is just our process for nuisance complaints. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, no, I understand, and I understand a nuisance complaint because if somebody has, you know, a problem with the health issues, but this is, people are not socially distancing, they haven't moved their tables far enough apart, and they're not wearing masks. It's not like they have to hire an exterminator or other things. It's just somebody's refusal to move chairs, put a mask on, or social distance. I don't see why it takes seven days.
Would you offer some suggestion as far as what you would like that to look like? That timeline?
Well, I guess from my point of view is, we have restaurants and bars and all the people that are following the rules. They know what the rules are. Now, if you go to a restaurant and they say, "We're not going to follow these rules," then it's pretty much over with. You say, "Okay, if you're not going to follow the rules, we'll come back tomorrow and check and make sure you're saying, you're doing what you're saying, you're not going to follow the rules," and then we start the process, because we're running the chance of moving that positivity up again, which is going to close down all the people that are following the rules. That's where I'm scared.
Understood, understood. So in that particular process, Supervisor Johnson, just so I understand very clearly what you're saying, first step again would be our inspection. We go out within 24 hours thereafter, that first inspection, for the second inspection. If we still see that they're out of compliance, you are asking us to move forward with the legal process at that point? Is that correct? So we've had two visits, basically, in a short timeframe, and then that third would essentially be, in the case of a restaurant, a notice of violation.
That would be what I would think should happen, because obviously, they're not complying. They're just moving tables.
Understood.
Mr. Esplin, do you see a problem with that, by moving it up closer?
I think we can still do it. I mean, the point is, we want to give people an opportunity to comply in a reasonable amount of time, not too far, just, and I totally get what Supervisor Johnson is saying. We don't want to send this out far, but we also got to give them an opportunity. That's critical both for the grant that we receive, the agreement that we have with the state. It's critical with, it's consistent with what is being said in the executive orders, consistent with what we're receiving from the Department of Health Human Services. So I think we can constrict the time, but any more constriction, we could not do, we could not.
Any other questions? We do have a motion on the floor? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, was that you, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, just to add to that, you know, that's the process, then when it goes to legal, like the county attorney, like Attorney Knutson pointed out, there's, we still have to follow those statutes. We still have to follow, you know, under 36, 183.05 or 6, I believe, there's a notice period. We have to do that. So just bear in mind that there is, there is going to be some delay there. We prefer to give a warning. We would prefer to say, hey, here you go. We've tried. Here's, it's coming, it's coming. So there can be, there will be some delay in there as well, just so you're aware.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call?
Supervisor Watson?
Can we get the motion restated?
Supervisor Gould, certainly. Supervisor Watson?
Yes, hang on just a second. Motion to permit the Mojave County Department of Health to inspect, investigate, and enforce Arizona Governor's executive orders as proposed by the Mojave County Health Director, including the pursuance of legal actions in accordance with the executive orders and Title 36 of the Arizona revised statutes. This motion shall clarify and supersede any previous board actions and discussions regarding the enforcement of executive orders, including those discussions on August 10th and August 13th of 2020.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Angus? Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Bishop?
Yes.
And we have three to one without an answer from Supervisor Angus.
Okay, Chairman Watson made the motion.
Did Supervisor Watson, you voted in favor of it?
Yes, I voted in favor.
So that's three yeses. Motion is approved. Okay, this meeting's adjourned.